Good evening. I'd like to call the public hearing for the public hearing of council pertaining to municipal reserve disposition. It's being held today, January 20th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in council chambers. This public hearing is held pursuant to the Municipal Government Act, RSA 2000, Chapter M-26 and amendments thereto. I hereby declare the public hearing relating to municipal reserve disposition of lot 6 MR, Block 17, Plan 9411613, now open at 7:00, 7:00 PM. Can we have a motion to adopt the public hearing agenda? And Bryce, are you able to get the counselors up on that screen? Counselors, I can't see you yet, but if someone could just maybe make us make an eye or that you're willing to make an emotion to adopt the public hearing agenda? Counselors, can you hear me? Are the counselors able to hear me at home? Counselors, are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking, thanks. We had a bit of a problem there. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the public hearing agenda.
I would so move, your worship.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to adopt the public hearing agenda. All in favor? In favor? Thank you, Councilor Montgomery. Legislative Services?
Thank you, your worship. Administration is bringing forward this request for disposition, disposition of municipal reserve lot 6 MR, Block 17, Plan 9411613, containing 0.3423 acres along the northwest corner at the intersection of Highway 1 and Highway 817. Public notices for the municipal reserve disposition of lot 6 MR, Block 17, Plan 9411613 were published in the Strathmore Times on January 1st and January 8th, 2021. Notice posting on the site was placed on the subject property on January 5th, 2021.
The following rules of conduct will be followed during the public hearing. Presentation should be brief and to the point, and shall be limited to three minutes in length. The order of presentation shall be the administration, those in favor of the bylaw, then those opposed to the bylaw, any other person deemed to be affected by the bylaw. Council may ask questions of the speakers after each presentation for clarification purposes, and there will be no debating the bylaw. To date, no letters of support and none opposed have been received. Does the administration have any comments? And joining us tonight is the one and only Chuck Proctor.
Well, thank you, your worship and members of council. I've got a very brief presentation prepared tonight, just five slides. Just to give a bit of an overview here. Okay, so just where the star is on the map, that's the, that's the property that we're, we're talking about there, adjacent to Highway 1 and Wheatland Trail. So this MR parcel was created from a past subdivision in 1994. There are currently two free sanding signs and a temporary shed currently located on this parcel. It's administration's opinion that the parcel does not include any key neighborhood linkages or nodes, and won't have an adverse impact on residents if the MR designation is removed. And just the next steps for this application, subject to the information presented here tonight at the public hearing, administration is recommending that this MR designation for these lands be removed. The town is still going to own the parcel. Removing the MR designation on this parcel will allow us to illegally accept applications for lease agreements and development permits on these lands. Pending decision tonight, an application can be made to the land titles office will be made, and that's an estimated two to week, two to four week turnaround on that one. And then once designation is removed at land titles office, we can accept lease agreements and development permits for the signs and the shed, and that's an estimated 12 weeks. Just briefly, again, our recommendation tonight is subject to the consideration of the feedback given here tonight, that council direct administration to apply through land titles office for MR disposition of lot 6 MR, Block 17, Plan 9411613. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who, I suppose I can take questions if, if our counselors have questions? Nope, sorry. I think that's at the end. My mistake. Is there anyone present who supports the bylaw who wishes to speak? Is there anyone present who opposes the bylaw who wishes to speak? Is there anyone present deemed to be affected by the bylaw who wishes to speak? Do the counselors have any or any questions of administration? Counselor Bauer?
Your worship, thank you very much. I was just wondering if Mr. Proctor could answer the question that I have, just about whether or not changing the designation of this property will affect the green space at all. Will anybody ever be able to cement over or in any way affect that green space from providing an essential barrier between Westridge Road and the properties that are currently there?
Thank you, Counselor Bauer, for, for the question. Legally, removing the MR designation just changes something at land titles. The town would still own the parcel. We would still be, you know, the landowner there. You know, theoretically, someone can apply to change that green space, but it's our land. We would say likely no. The reason mainly that we're removing this designation is so that, there's a couple of existing signs on, on this property that we want to, I guess legalize, and that's our main objective for removing this. We have no, no plans to change any of the green space or, or change any of the other arrangements on site. It's just kind of a, a housekeeping amendment at land titles office to, again legally allow us to, to look at these two signs and shed permit.
Thank you. That's what I had thought, but I did want to just ensure, because there's always an opportunity for people to take away green space, and, and I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't the case in this, in this designation. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Bauer. Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you, worship. My question is just, has to do with, are we currently charging anything to these businesses that have a sign set up on the property? And if not, are we planning on charging money for the use of this site?
Very good question, Counselor Montgomery. So we, we are currently, we're not charging anyone for use of that land. One thing in the future, you know, there is going to be a future lease agreement for these lands that we'll look into. And it's my understanding that the developer or the nearby businesses maintaining those lands for us right now, free of charge. So we're kind of, we're in an interesting deal right now. And then I guess the future is, is unknown at this point, whether we, you know, continue getting those lands maintained for free, or charge a little bit of money and change that relationship. We're just not sure yet. Jim, do you have anything to add, or is that? Okay. I hope that answers your question, Counselor Montgomery. Thank you.
Yeah, it does. And thanks a lot, Chuck. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from counselors? Seeing none? And I didn't turn my mic on, did I? I'll probably need to do that again, since this is a public hearing. My apologies, council and public at home. I did not press the speaker button. So I hereby declare this public hearing for the disposition of municipal reserve lot 6 MR, Block 17, Plan 9411613, closed at 7:09 PM, and will accept the motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Sobel, for that motion. All in favor? And the motion is carried. And at this time, I'd like to open and declare open the regular meeting of council for January 20th, 2021, and we're opening at 7:10 PM. At this time, I'd like to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items from any of council tonight? Seeing none. Are there any items from administration?
Your worship.
Sorry, Counselor Montgomery.
Thank you. I just wanted to add something under council statements, please.
That'll be 14.1?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jennifer in administration?
Thank you, worship. Administration is requesting that council add two items under, in camera. The first is a land matter, sorry, a land matter under FOIP Section 241A, and the second is a personnel matter under FOIP Section 241BI.
Thank you for that. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to, oh, Counselor Corbille.
Thank you, worship. I have a question. Are we going to maybe talk about an agenda if we could meet with Amelia here, or do we want to wait on hearing from her first, or?
That's a good question. I had sent an email to council to see if there was interest in, in asking for a, a meeting with Minister Ahir. Jennifer?
Your worship, you can bring that up under questions between counselors.
Okay. Were you able to hear that, Counselor Corbille?
Sure, could, yes.
Do you need that written?
Otherwise, I will, I will confirm the agenda as amended.
Thank you for that motion. You've all heard the motion. All in favor? And the motion is carried. We have no presentations or recognitions. We have no delegations tonight. We do not have a consent agenda. And that brings us to item 7, 7.1, adoption of the December 2nd, 2020, regular council meeting minutes. And I believe administration is going to speak to a couple of items in that first.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to make a couple changes to it. On page one, there is a duplicate resolution under number two that should not be there, so it has been removed. On page 13, number 12, for the bylaw, the first reading should have opposed Counselor Bauer. And on page 15, there's a correction of a spelling of Marla Lee's, Lean's name.
Thank you, Deborah. Any, anything from counselors on the regular council meeting minutes? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to adopt as amended. Counselor Cox? We have a motion on the floor from Counselor Cox to adopt the December 2nd, 2020, regular council meeting minutes as amended. All in favor? And that motion is carried. That brings us to 7.2, the adoption of the December 2nd, 2020, public hearing meeting, meeting minutes.
I would so move, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Peterson. We have a motion to adopt those meeting minutes. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Item 8, we have no tabled items. Number nine, items, reports from administration. 9.1, 2021 tax recovery sale of property, which is on page 21 of our agenda. And I believe we have a speaker on this. And I, I don't think we've met, so if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself to council, that would be great.
Well, good evening, your worship and council. My name is Alan Down. I am the manager of assessment and tax at the town of Strathmore. So I'm here to speak to you tonight about four individually titled surface parking stalls at Savannah condo. They are going up for auction at the end of March. And in accordance with paragraph 419 of the Municipal Government Act, council must set a reserve bid in any conditions that are applicable to this tax sale. Just to give you a bit of background, extensive work has been done to contact the owner of these parcels. However, since 2017, all correspondence with the property owner has been returned to the town. Town administration nor the condo corporation do not know the whereabouts of the property owner. Each parcel has an amount of approximately $447 owing in property taxes and arrears for the years 2016 through 2020. That number will actually be slightly higher because of the penalties that were applied in January of this year. The condo corporation has expressed an interest in purchasing the, these parking stalls. From the date of the auction, the municipality is entitled to the possession of the parcels should not, should the parcels not be sold during the auction. However, if the town takes ownership of the parcels, the town could then be liable for the outstanding condo fees owing, if any, to the condo corporation. And the town would do its very best to avoid having to pay those condo fees. The current assessment of the parking stalls is $1,500 each. It's in the, one of the things that we should be aware of, is that since the inception of Savannah condos, there hasn't been a standalone sale of a parking stall at the condo complex. The stalls are typically sold along with an underground parking stall and the condo itself. The assessment applied to these stalls is similar to the stalls at Westlake Circles, Westlake Circle condos. These parking stalls have very limited appeal to those who are not residents of Savannah condos. And the condo corporation has a bylaw which precludes the sale of a parking stall to any party that is not an owner in Savannah condos. One of the things that we should be aware of, that perhaps it is a good idea that a condition of the sale, that it be limited to the Savano, Savannah condo owners or the condo corporation. And while the Municipal Government Act takes precedent over these condo bylaws, this would mitigate litigation risk. In conclusion, administration respectfully recommends council set a reserve price as close as reasonably possible to the market value of $1,500 per stall, with the condition that it can only be sold to either a condo owner or the condo corporation itself.
Thank you, Alan. Are there any questions from counselors? Counselor Cox?
Thank you, worship. Hello, Alan.
Hello.
I have a few questions. Not understanding, do they, they owe taxes on just the parking stalls, not the condo itself?
That is correct. The, the outstanding tax amount, this individual does not actually own a condo in the Savannah condos. So he was, I, I don't know exactly how this happened, but he ended up owning those parking stalls without owning a unit, or any of the underground parking stalls as well. So it's kind of an unusual situation. So I don't know
Yeah, okay.
the background behind it or anything of that nature, so.
Okay, so then my next question goes to, just, can you explain the difference between the tax sale and what would happen in a foreclosure? Like, in a foreclosure, if you, if you as the person foreclosing obtained more money than what is owed, that money then has to be returned to the owner of the property. So is the, is it a tax sale? Is that different?
It is slightly different. In, in this particular case, if it in fact did sell at, during the auction process, the taxes that were owing on the property would come back to the town, and the balance of the amounts that were received will go to the property owner.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. Any other questions for Ellen? Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you, worship. So one question I have has to do with, what are the outstanding condo fees on these right now?
In terms of the outstanding condo fees, I do not know what those are. These are outstanding taxes. But it is my understanding from having discussed this situation with the condo corporation itself, there are in fact outstanding condo fees as well. I don't know what the amount is.
Okay. And given that they haven't collected these fees, I guess, up till now on these, what is their mechanism for collecting those fees?
I'm not entirely sure. That's a secondary concern. I mean, we're, we're primarily concerned with, we're getting the taxes in our hands at a minimal cost to the town, or little or no cost to the town. So once that's been resolved, then it would be perhaps the condo's responsibility to get that from the new owner.
And where did you get the idea that these, these were worth $1,500 on the market?
These actually, there is a number of sales. So we had some sales at Westlake Circle of these parking, of individually titled parking stalls. And there's also from sales, we can extrapolate the value of the parking stalls from sales of the units. Because when they sell, they actually sell the unit and two separately titled parking stalls. So from that process, we can extrapolate value for the parking stalls themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Any other questions from counselors? Then I'm looking for a motion?
Could I ask one more question, please?
Counselor Montgomery?
So I guess like, what is the fallback plan if the reserve price is not met?
It is my understanding that if the reserve price is not met, the town will take possession and then try to sell them. In doing so, to minimize the costs of the taxpayers of this town, we would do whatever we could to avoid having to pay any additional costs in terms of the condo fees, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Counselor Sobel?
I'm ready with a motion, your worship. I move that council set a market value reserve bid of $1,500 per parcel for each of the parking stalls located at 1005 A and B Westmount Drive. A further condition of sale is the bidding to be limited to the condo board and/or property owners of the Savannah Development.
Thank you for that. You've all heard the motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And the motion is carried. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you very much, worship, council.
That brings us to item 9.2, municipal reserve disposition of lot 6 MR, Block 17, Plan 9411613, and Chuck is back.
Thank you, your worship. Just again, our recommendation is, you know, subject to the feedback received tonight, that council direct administration to apply through land titles office to remove the MR designation for this lot. This is kind of more of a, a housekeeping amendment. At this time, the town is still going to keep these lands. Let's move on to the next step, which is considering some development permits and, and lease agreements for some stuff that's already on this parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Are there any further questions for Chuck at this time? Seeing none, we're again looking for a motion. Counselor Corbille?
Thank you, worship. I move that council direct administration to apply through the land titles office municipal reserve disposition of lot 6 MR, Block 17, Plan 9411613.
Thank you for that motion. Now that we have a motion on the floor, is there further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that motion is carried. We move on to 9.3, recreational use of stormwater ponds, page 27. And is, oh, Mr. LaGore is speaking to this.
Sue you, Mr. Mayor. While we have pulled this report because we have a little more work to do on it, we would still like to discuss skating on the storm ponds. We currently have a bit of an issue at Strathmore Lakes, so we'd like to discuss that, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Simpson, please.
Thank you, Mr. LaGore. And Jim is going to, to start us off in a discussion possibly on this item?
Thank you, worship, to council. I think as most of you know, if not all of you know, there's been a bit of a controversy over the ability to skate on the Strathmore Lakes pond, storm pond. Over the past years, this has happened. However, the town did not allow skating, and there were signs posted, but people still used the pond for skating. Administration, our main concern is to protect our staff and protect the residents of Strathmore with regards to skating on the pond. We want to ensure that the pond is safe for equipment and people on the pond. And I know lately, we've, there's some open water, and someone had cleared off a skating rink that we had to close. There's a couple other skating rinks that are cleaned and, and working right now. But I know that operations has placed barricades on a portion of the pond that they feel is safe for skating, and most likely for some kind of equipment to clean the, clean the ice. However, there are some residents that want to use the entire pond, which our staff, which has training, are educated, has taken training on use of ponds that are frozen when they can be used and when they shouldn't be used. And we do not want residents to be using the, all of the pond. The area we have cordoned off is an area that is safe at this point in time. Our manager of operations has provided you with a report. I believe all of you have received that. And I know Ms. McCollum is, is, is well-trained in this. She has, I think upwards of 15 years working with these types of situations. And I believe her report is, is outlines very well the situation. One of the issues is we do not have, we do not have as-built plans for that, so we're not really sure the depth, the contours, et cetera, of that pond. At this time, we are trying to work with Mr. Bertram and get as much information as we can. And we're, we're quite pleased so far with our communications with him. What are, what are some of the solutions? Well, what we're suggesting is we could clean more of the area that we have cordoned off that could be cleaned to open up some more area within the safe area. We could probably put a couple more skating rinks in, in between the two that are there now. And both the two skating rinks that are there now have been cleaned by residents, not the town. But we could go in and clean some more area on the lake. We do have another suggestion that we would like to try to do as more of maybe a pilot project, is put one or two ice surfaces in other areas of towns, like no, other, in other areas of our town. We wouldn't put up boards, but we, we'd make surfaces of ice for people to skate on. So that would give a couple more, and we could see how that went for the rest of this year, and maybe next year, maybe four would be possible. So that's one option. So there's those two options there. Other than that, if, if council so desires to allow residents to skate all over the lake, we would probably, we would recommend that we hire an external expert that would determine the safety of the lake and where it could go. I, I'm certainly I'm certainly here to try to answer any of your questions. Ms. McCollum is here as well and will assist me if I can't answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking to Donna's report, and I'm glad that Dawn is here as well to join us. Some questions. I have Counselor Peterson, then Sobel, then Corbille.
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to say that I was immensely impressed and appreciative of the report that our Director of Operations gave us with regards to activities on Strathmore Lakes. And even more grateful for the options that Mr. Simpson and Ms. McCollum have put to us with regards to putting some additional rinks into the community, especially during this pandemic time where kids desperately need time outdoors. My question is whether or not Ms. McCollum's response has been posted on our own social media, on the town site. I think it would be really worthwhile, because it demonstrates two things. It demonstrates the due diligence done by the town. And secondly, highlights the primary and paramount concern for the safety of residents, particularly children. And I think it would be just really worthwhile. It was a really good education for me to read that. And I would like to see it there. And if there is possibility for proceeding with two additional rinks, your worship, I would be more than happy to make such a motion if we had some indication of cost and capacity going forward. And thank you. I'm very appreciative again.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Peterson. Counselor Sobel, then Counselor Corbille.
Thank you. So, I know we have a bylaw before us that's been pulled and will be coming back to us. So, I don't want to spend a lot of time on that. Although, one question that I was going to raise that perhaps could be addressed is in regards to Section 3.3.3, which deals with non-motorized boating. And as humorous as this may sound, I don't mean to be humorous. But remote-controlled miniature boats are actually motorized. And I know there's a desire from a club to utilize that lake. And there was some controversy as to whether or not they were permitted to do so. So, I'm judging from the flavor and the focus on this bylaw and the definition of non-contact water activities, that this would be something that would fit within the bylaw. But I just wanted to raise it as a possible issue and see if it could be clarified. Although, to be honest with you, it looks like it's certainly allowable based on what I've read in the bylaw. So, the idea of, first of all, in regards to Strathmore Lakes, you know, I love the fact that people are out there cleaning and allowing their kids to go skating. I think that's a great idea. But we cannot get around the fact that this is a storm pond, and the water is flowing. And as we've seen what happened in Chestermere last week when this young lady fell through the ice, those things happen in those conditions. And I just think it has to be emphasized that the town is not trying to play Grinch on this. They're trying to make sure everybody gets home safe at the end of the playdate. So, I'm in a position where I have to leave this to the expertise from our town. It's us who have liability here. And all we want is for nobody to get hurt. So, I leave that in administration's capable hands. Regarding the mini ice rinks in different areas, I'm curious. It's curious for me, because I brought this issue to council a lot of years ago. Never went very far. So, I am so all over this. It's crazy. I know there's two communities that have done this, one presently doing it in Aspen, and another one who used to do it in Cambridge. It was a draw. It was a magnet for kids. And both of these are in dry ponds, which brings me to the question that I have. So, we have eight dry ponds, and I know the memo from Donna, which was an amazing memo and letter, and I support and encourage that memo to be released on social media, et cetera. It focuses on park space, which I think differentiates between two, a dry pond. But is there any intention to focus more on our eight dry ponds that we have for something like this?
Through you, Worship, to Counselor Sobel. No. The answer is no. We'd like not to use the dry ponds. There are some other issues that occur during the springtime with the dry ponds. We would prefer people not to use any of our stormwater ponds dry or otherwise other than Strathmore Lakes and Kinsman Lake. And I know the dry ponds, you know, you may wonder why, and I know Donna can speak to this. We've talked about this, her and I. And there are issues. I know Ethan Wilson as well. We've had these chats, and there are some issues when people go in and put an ice surface in a dry pond that depending on the spring, it may be difficult for the water to get away. So, Donna, is that correct? Yeah. So, you know, administration, well, you know, we take a risk no matter what if we allow people on the pond. What we're trying to do is mitigate our risk to the town. You mentioned Chestermere. I think you probably heard about the fellow way up north that fell through and lost his life up in Fort Mack area. It does happen, but, you know, we just try to do our best to protect our residents and protect our staff. We don't want our staff out there with heavy equipment and possibly going through the ice as well. And I can't speak to this report that you, that got pulled tonight. That did not come out of my area. That was community services, and I really don't want to answer anything as far as that's concerned. But one thing you should note in there, they surveyed twenty-four municipalities, and only one of those twenty-four municipalities allowed any recreational activities on storm ponds. And that was the city of Locom. Thank you.
So, I guess eventually I'd be looking at, just as a follow-up, just, you know, I'm wondering if we've ever had flooding issues with dry ponds? Ever? And I'd be curious as to know if, I mean, if we've had if we've had no issues with a dry pond for, since our record started, I'm just wondering. And the issue is it's such a perfect location in some of these, for instance, Aspen and Cambridge. But I'll leave that for now, and perhaps we can discuss it when the bylaw comes back.
Yes, I'm sure to come up when this particular bylaw comes forward, and I think in two weeks. It's supposed to be back to council.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Counselor Corbille.
Thank you, Worship. I do have a couple quick questions. When the report, in Donna's report, it says that ice was of poor quality. You know, when it was started in December, you know, it was nine to ten inches. Was the quality checks done all the same spots at each time? The only reason where I'm going with this is I didn't know that ice, once it froze, could change in quality. And I guess that's where I was kind of not understanding.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Because it talks about like the ice thickness and the quality, because not, it's not just about how thick the ice is, but the quality of the ice. And it was talking about snow ice and the quality of the ice. I was just confused, and I didn't, I was having a hard time grasping. Like, does ice, once it's froze, change in quality? Like, that's where I was having troubles. Or were the different sections taken at different times? That's what I'm asking.
Correct. It is different, but I'll let Donna come up and explain to you why.
So, to answer your question, yes, the quality of ice does change when we take our measurements. It's at different locations on the ponds. Generally, in the beginning of the winter, it starts out as a quality called snow ice, which is a mixture of ice and snow, has a lot of air bubbles in it. Doesn't have a consistency of strength. Even though it might be thick, it's still, it's just not safe. The safest ice is clear blue ice, which we're starting to get there now. There's still a couple locations in Strathmore Lakes that are still snow ice.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I was going to go with, you know, I heard a couple of the residents, they had phoned, and I guess with the way that communications had rolled out, you know, that they were expecting perhaps January eighth. But the thickness of the ice, or the quality of the ice, wasn't good until January eleventh. And I think that's where the frustration comes in with the residents. I can understand that. So, moving forward, are we going to be working with the residents? Obviously, they take a great part of health services, you know, is allowing kids and families and people to do. Are we willing to work with a couple of the people who want to, you know, take the initiative to skate on Strathmore Lakes? Are we willing to work with them to ensure that it's done safely?
Yes, absolutely. We would do that.
Okay, awesome. Because, yeah, I think that they were just frustrated with, you know, nobody had approached them and told them, I guess, what was going on. They took it into their own hands. They realized like Zamboni probably is a little bit far, but anyway. And in regards to like the backyard rinks, I really like this idea. I knew that Cambridge, Aspen, prime examples, you know, they've had them for quite a while. And it's been other, I believe it was the Elks actually who did, I could be wrong, I'm not, don't quote me on that, in Cambridge. You know, and I know that they are used quite a bit, so. Anyway, if we are willing to work with some of them in the community moving forward, I would really appreciate that, and I'm sure they would too. I can pass on a couple names and numbers if that works.
Absolutely. I would like to just mention with regards to the backyard rinks that we don't want them on the dry ponds, but we have identified park spaces all over town, pretty much in every single quadrant where we could put a backyard rink. And water is accessible, yes.
That's good news. Thank you. Anything else, Counselor Corbille? I have Counselor Montgomery, then Counselor Cox, then Counselor Bauer.
You can move on for now. Thank you.
Counselor Bauer was, she had her hand up before I did, actually.
All right, thank you, Counselor Bauer.
Thank you, Worship, and thank you, Counselor Montgomery. So, I just have a couple questions for administration. I wonder how Locom, with similar size to us, is getting around liability with their storm ponds? Maybe we should look at this and see what they're doing, because is it possible that they're doing something right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Simpson?
They're not getting around the risk. They're taking on a huge risk. It doesn't matter what they do. But we can contact Locom and find out what they're doing, if they're doing anything different. But they, it doesn't matter, you know, there's a risk factor. All we're trying to do is mitigate the risk. And I would suggest that if Locom is allowing skating on a storm pond water body, they're taking a larger risk than municipalities that are not allowing it at all. And it is interesting. I mean, one out of twenty-four is not very many municipalities. But we can take your advice, and we can contact them and find out what they're doing, if they're doing anything different to mitigate their risk.
Thank you. The other thing I was wondering too is what current signage do we have educating the public of what a storm pond is versus a natural lake? And the differences in outflow, inflow, and also the contaminants that may be in the water, not only from salt from the roads, but chemicals that could leach from farmers' fields or the golf course or other possible contaminants that would come from other sources? Do we have that signage at our storm ponds?
Sorry about that. There is signage up at all our storm ponds that indicate that it is a stormwater storage facility. And it gives a little bit of an explanation, but I think the best way to educate people would be actually do a little bit more elaborate education as opposed to just the signage. A lot of the municipalities do, you know, show how storm ponds work, how the inlets work, what happens, what kind of drainage is going into those ponds, where it comes from, like obviously from the streets and the impermeable surfaces. And I think that would be a good way to go.
Thank you. The reason I was thinking this was when I, you know, go down the canal and you see that one, you know, they call it the drowning machine. And they have such explicit signage to show you what will happen to every part of your body should it go through that drowning machine. And nobody goes in there, because you know that you're going to die. So, what I'm kind of thinking is if we educate our public, I myself was not even educated about storm ponds until I started this position, I didn't realize the difference. And I think that there's a lot of people out there that could really benefit from a little bit of knowledge about that, you know, we're not trying to be the mean people here. We're not trying to be Grinches or anything. We're really concerned about safety. And this is why. So, that's kind of, you know, what I wanted to project. And then the other thing is just that I would like us not to focus on specific activities that can be done on the ponds, because I think that that's limiting, especially in the case where we say non-motorized and motorized, or human-propelled, human power versus non-human power. And with the winter, there's a lot of other different activities that I thought of that can be done on ice that are not listed here. So, I would just like to see when you bring the bylaw either a more comprehensive list or a less comprehensive list, so that people are not limited to just those activities. Does that make sense, what I mean?
Yes, it does.
Awesome. Thank you.
Counselor Montgomery. Thank you, Counselor Bauer. Counselor Montgomery, then Counselor Cox.
Thank you, Worship. So, yeah, and I guess if it's fine with administration, I'd just like to ask a couple questions about the policies and whatnot. I'm curious to know like what the difference between kayaking and canoeing is.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The policy is not on the agenda tonight. It will be back on the agenda on February third. We're just providing information tonight on ice skating on Strathmore Lakes.
Okay. Well, I guess the one that's more relevant to, I guess, ice and snow is, I just wanted to point out that I think that the way that the policy and bylaw are currently written, it doesn't allow people to shovel snow without permission of the CIO.
So, is that something we can take a look at as far as when the bylaw comes back to us then? Yeah. Okay.
Like I said earlier, it's not our report. We were just tagging along because of the use of Strathmore Lakes for skating. But we'll pass, we can pass those comments along to the author.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's all I have, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Counselor Cox?
Thank you, Worship. So, mine goes a little bit more...
Thank you, Worship. So, mine goes a little bit more to, as well, bringing, when you bring it back. I understand Councillor Sobel was talking about some boats that are motorized and so on and so forth. My thought process goes to all the birds. Are we allowing motorized anything on that lake when there's massive amounts of nests? That's my only concern. Now, as far as skating and stuff goes, I love everything you're saying. The more, the merrier, the better. The more we can have out there for them to skate on, the better. It's my two cents.
Thank you, Councillor Cox. If I could just weigh in on the, the small RC boats. The, the gentlemen who come out from Calgary each Sunday and Thursday with, with sailboats, the boats aren't motorized. The only thing that the remote control does is control the sail. It's the wind that propels the boats. So, that should be perfectly fine. They're so excited about our lake, they'd like to have provincials here and nationals. So, that's pretty awesome. Councillor Corbille, did you want to speak again?
Sorry, I just have one more question. We have used Kinsman Lake for skating for, oh, quite a long time, as far as I know, anyway. And same with, there's a couple even in Hillview that are used. How are they different than Strathmore Lakes? I guess that is one question I would like to know. And is it the fact that, because we have to pump water, there is no outlet in Strathmore Lakes? Is that what's affecting it? I, I'm just trying to grasp why some storm ponds we can use and some we have to, you know, I guess, watch a little bit more.
What I learned today, Councillor Corbille, if this is any of any help, is that Strathmore Lake has six inlets of water. So, there's so much more volume moving of storm water coming into that lake. And it only has the one outfall that does not work properly. It needs to be redesigned and fixed. So, that's one of the problems with Strathmore Lake. And, and while I'm really happy that people are using that lake, I drove by when the Zamboni was on that ice, and I was terrified, because I thought there was a chance it could go through, because I didn't know if the weight of the machine and the depth of the thickness of the ice was going to support that Zamboni. So, that one worried me quite a bit that day. Donna, did you want to speak to anything there?
The other factor with the Zamboni is the speed as well, your worship. With regards to-
Can't hear you.
Sorry. With regards to using the other ponds, I think what the key here is, especially with Kinsman, is it's not very deep. So, in the case that a piece of equipment did go through, we would probably be looking at a rescue as opposed to a recovery in Kinsman. Whereas at Strathmore Lakes, is incredibly deep. If a piece of equipment goes through there, we'll more than likely be looking at a recovery. Hillview, same situation. I'm not too sure about that pond. We've never cleared it for anybody. I have never seen maps of that. I, at this point in time, would recommend people not be using that for skating right now.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna, and thank you, Councillor Corbille. Are there any other questions or, well, Mr. Legore?
Mr. Mayor, I support Donna totally with the report that she presented to council. I have some experience with ice. I have seen over a foot of clear ice disappear overnight due to flowing water. And you can have flowing water, and the temperatures vary in that lake because of the amount of inlets coming into it. Unless directed otherwise by council, we will proceed with putting another ice surface on there for public skating within the confined area that Donna has identified. And we will control anybody that tries to put a skating pond or ice surface for public skating. Anywhere outside that area, we will close it down with either snow and/or gravel to stop it. It's important that you regulate this and try and mitigate our, our liability here. I've been present as a coroner when a body was recovered from a lake, and it's not a pleasant sight when you're pulling someone and a piece of equipment out of ice. And it's not nice. It's recovery.
Thank you, Mr. Legore. Mr. Simpson?
Just, just one thing to add to Mr. Legore's comments. We will be putting two surfaces on, on that area that we consider to be safe.
And they'll be well-marked, I'm assuming?
If, if you've been out there, obviously you have. It's, we, we have barriers up now to show where the safe area is. And there's room for two more skating surfaces in there, between the two that are there now.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Peterson, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Peterson?
Your worship, I just wanted to be assured that the memo that Donna sent to council can be shared with community. I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that very well-prepared, well-researched document, so that it is available to all community. And that in future years, I'm sure this conversation will come back, and it will be a very good document for reference. Thank you, Worship.
Your worship, it will be uploaded onto our website, yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, I guess at this point, we're looking forward to that coming back to us as a, oh, Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you. I just have one final question. So, in, in my time living in Strathmore, I, I've noticed that, you know, like barriers get put out on the ice, you know, throughout the winter. And then, in the spring, you kind of see them like half, you know, hanging through the ice, you know, into the water. And then, you know, presumably, they just, like, do they just fall down? And do, like, we recover those? Or, or is there just like a pile of these barriers at the bottom of, you know, Kinsman, for instance?
There are shopping carts, but chances are, there may be some other things in the bottom of Kinsman. Our, what, one of our checks includes checking the manholes around the ponds to look for flow. If we notice that there's quite a bit of flow coming in from spring melting, we'll go remove those before they end up in the lake.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, again, I guess at this point, we'll be waiting till February 3rd, when the bylaw may come back to us? Okay. Thank you all for the discussion and the good questions. And that brings us to 9.4, Council Committee Appointments, Public Members. Debra?
Thank you, your worship. We have an application for the, from the public, Jimmy Calia, to apply for the Sustainability Committee, and the Nomination Committee is recommending that we accept this application.
Thank you very much for that, Debra. Looking for a motion, Councillor Sobel?
Thank you, your worship. I would move that council accept the recommendation for committee appointment from the Nomination Committee has presented and appoints to the Sustainability Committee for a period ending October 31st, 2021.
And you need that motion to have the name? We'll, we'll need the name of the gentleman who's going to be put on that committee?
I think it's a lady, and I'm gonna need it again. It's not on my file.
Jimmy Calia.
Is it Janine?
It's Jimmy, J-I-M-I-Y.
Jimmy Calia. Cali, Calier?
Calia, I think. C-A-L-I-A. Calia, I believe.
Give that.
We have a motion on the floor to accept that committee member. You've all heard the motion, all in favor? And that motion is carried. That brings us to 10 Committee Reports, 10.1, Committee Reports from Councillors on Committees in Which They Sit. Councillor Corbille first, and Councillor Sobel?
Thank you, your worship. I will send this out for all council. We just had a Waddamza. And I just, I, there was a couple of things that I wanted to let people know. They broke a record this year. They increased their calls by 7.5%. They did over 4,000 calls this year with a slow April. So, I thought that was, that was really big. And that paramedics and, well, and EMT, they were available for the vaccinations. So, they got to start last weekend. So, they were really happy with the change there. And he expects probably about 90% at least will be vaccinated, so.
Thank you, Councillor Corbille. I have Councillor Sobel?
Thank you. I have two, two reports, your worship. One is the Traffic Advisory Committee. And this committee met virtually on January 12th. A great deal of effort and work was done by Kelsey Wilson, who's an administration member of the committee and our infrastructure technician, to complete a review of the school bus route maps for crosswalks. As a result, she's developed a detailed criterion for, which will provide guidance as to when and where to place crosswalks. The document can also be used in regards to identifying locations for pedestrian rapid flashing beacons. And as well, the committee discussed the results of a survey done, thanks again to Senior Peace Officer Michael Peyton and Ms. Wilson, regarding 2019 and 2020 Traffic Safety Sign Project. The committee voted to pursue another year of these signs, as they are considered an educational tool. Going ahead with the project will be funding dependent. My second in the committee is the Strathmore Wheatland Chamber of Commerce. And the most pressing issue that was discussed by the Chamber Board on January 13th was the upcoming Business Excellence Awards, which will take place virtually on January the 29th, beginning at 7:00 PM. The name of this event this year is Glam in Gems. There were over 250 nominations this year, far exceeding last year's, and everyone seems very excited for this event. To join the party online, you'll have to buy a ticket, and that will come, they will come on sale Friday morning. Your ticket will not only allow you to watch the program, which will include some pretty awesome entertainment, like a performance by Drew Gregory, but will also get your name in for a bunch of draws for some fantastic prizes. Tickets for this event will be $10 and available on Eventbrite. And more information will be out on public media, public media, et cetera, on Friday. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Sobel. Any other reports from councillors? Oh, Councillor Peterson and Councillor Mac-
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to, on behalf of Councillor Cox and myself, briefly comment. You don't have the ratified minutes from our last meeting, but pertinent to what is happening at Wheatland Housing, is that we have signed a very agreeable three-year contract with, with our workers. And in addition to that, Wheatland Housing, Social Housing continues to have enormous and onerous waiting lists, which is something for all councils' radar, because it speaks to, I think, what is going to become a burgeoning issue in terms of housing, affordable housing in this community, as in most communities in our province. And finally, your worship, Councillor Cox very kindly circulated a newsletter that has been, tonight, that has been published by our Building Committee. And it speaks about what is happening with regards to the ongoing work, the, the very lengthy, an onboarding work that has been done by the Building Committee. And anybody wanting to have further questions answered, Glenn Kester, who is the Chair of that committee, his number is present there. So, thank you, Councillor Cox. And, and that's all I have, your worship.
Thank you very much. I have Councillor Montgomery next.
Thank you, Worship. So, I just wanted to say a few words about things going on with the Library Board. So, the Library Board had their organizational meeting last night. And there's a, a good group of volunteers there right now. And many of the same members have remained in positions. And the other piece of news that I'd like to share is that the library has begun working with the Hospice Society, and they have created a space within the library called the Compassion Corner, which is just a place where there's kind of information and books relevant to hospice-type stuff. Oh, and then unfortunately, there will be a staff member, Carolyn, who will be resigning or finishing at the end of this month. Fortunately, she will be, and Carolyn's been there for quite a while, actually. And fortunately, she will be coming back, you know, part-time. So, that, that's, that's good news for us. And I also wanted to update with regards to the CALP program, which just has to do with, with kind of adult learning and creating adult learning opportunities. And I just want to say like, that that's going very well. And, and if there's anybody in the community who is looking to improve some of their just kind of literacy-related skills and other, other skills that might need a bit of work with regards to literacy or, or just that kind of stuff, please contact the library. And there's, there's spaces available. And there was a letter read last night from a resident who has been making use of this program. And it was a very heartwarming letter to just hear the difference that this has made in their lives and, and the, the, the bright future that this person sees ahead of themselves, thanks to this program. And so, I just wanted to say what a, what a great thing it is for our community, and we're lucky that we, we were able to secure that. And, and yeah, so that's basically it for the Library Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cox?
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Councillor Peterson. Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Peterson, for the report on Wheatland Housing. I also circulated a CMHC newsletter. And as Council, Deputy Mayor Peterson referred to at the beginning, it is quite a bore, but it does present the front of what Councillor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Peterson said earlier about the housing and the crisis that we're heading into. That's it.
Thank you, Councillor Cox. Deputy Mayor Peterson?
Your worship, I just might add to Councillor Montgomery's report on the library. The, some of the clients at the overnight shelter have been a beneficiary of the CALP program. And I, I just want to add to his praise of that program. It is remarkable in how it's changing lives. And in a time of COVID, that they've been able to roll this program out with volunteers is having a remarkable impact on lives. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe you all got my report last week on the CMRB Board Meeting. And tomorrow at 9:30, I have a servicing meeting with the same group. So, to be honest, a lot of times, the servicing discussions don't have a great deal to do with Strathmore. But I'll do my best to jot down whatever I feel is important enough for you to hear. So, I'm looking for a motion to accept those committee reports. Councillor Corbille?
I'm going to accept the reports for information.
Thank you very much, councillor. You've all heard that motion? All in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. We move on to items directly related to council. 11.1, Notice of Motion, Councillor Peterson, Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities, which is on page 53. Deputy Mayor Peterson, did you want to speak to that?
Briefly, your worship. I won't bother going through all the notes that I put here, because it is here for public consumption and for council. And it's been before council a few times and been held over. But I, I would, I would just, just like to move on to page 54 and, and make the motion, if that's okay with you, your worship.
Yes, for sure.
So, as per the notice of motion, as the Town of Strathmore is committed to providing equitable and fair treatment to all community members and to all visitors to our community. And as the Town of Strathmore has embarked upon an anti-racism initiative with our Sichica counterparts. And as Town Council has publicly expressed a commitment to promoting awareness to all community members of their rights and responsibilities with regards to fairness, equity, and respect for all aspects of, of community, excuse me, that it therefore be resolved that the Town of Strathmore join the Canadian Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities. And if I just might speak to that, your worship, I, I know that this council is certainly already heavily engaged in this. But to join this, this particular coalition gives us some access to a network of municipalities from, from different areas in Canada and around the world. And it also gives us access to potential for grants that, that run through the coalition and through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And also gives us an opportunity to share experiences for our mayor and counterparts that are involved in anti-racism activities to present federally and provincially. And most importantly, it gives us access to resources to help eliminate racism and other forms of discrimination in community, and it- other forms of discrimination in community, and it gives us more power to bring inclusion to our community. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Peterson. And following along that line of thought, I'll be reaching out to Counselor Breaker and Counselor Carlin. Carlin, I'm not sure his last name now, I'm sorry.
Black Rabbit.
Carlin Black Rabbit, as well as Chief Profoot, to see if there's an opportunity in the next month or so to start re-engaging as far as Zoom meetings concerning the work we've done in the past. I know they have a lot of COVID cases right now, and I'm sure their minds and their efforts are in a lot of different directions, but it's something that we can hopefully look at restarting fairly soon. So Deputy Mayor Peterson, did you, I'm sorry if I'm confused, but did you actually make the motion concerning the coalition?
Yes, the motion is actually on the very top of page 55.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could we have Counselor Peterson please read the motion as she would like it recorded, please?
Thank you, Legislative Services. That it be resolved that the Town of Strathmore join the Canadian Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities through signing the declaration.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Peterson. You've all heard the motion?
Excuse me.
Counselor Montgomery?
So I understand that with this, with this program, that there is some obligation on the part of our administration to create policies and, you know, to allocate some, you know, some resources towards this. And I would need to know what exactly the cost was going to be and what exactly our obligation would be before I could, you know, support this. Like, it sounds like a good thing, but, you know, things are tight right now, and I would just have to know where the money was going to be coming from, and then, and then what staff resources we're going to need to be allocated towards this.
Deputy Mayor Peterson?
Thank you, worship. So, when I, when I was looking into this, that was one of the considerations that I had. And when I was speaking to people who were involved in the coalition, they already, they knew that we already had this plan with Sixica. So the plan already exists going forward. I don't know that we've ever applied any funding to that particular plan. Anything that we wanted to do above and beyond that, we have many things, I guess, that are already occurring in our community that are already funded, and so, or are already actioned by this council. And the main one of those, I guess, is the undertaking by Sixica and Strathmore councils. And the second one of most note is the hire done by the Strathmore Fire Department in that new position of the Assistant Deputy Fire Chief. And so, we have the right to go forward to adopt any additional priorities, and any additional priorities that might be adopted under this that would have funding implications would have to come forward through a separate bylaw or a separate policy. And Chestamere, for instance, has, belongs to the, to the coalition, and they signed the declaration and went ahead, and there was no other obligation beyond that. In the, in very, in the last year, after having been involved for quite some time, Chestamere did hire a person who is dedicated to building inclusion in their community.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that?
Yes, please. There will be no cost to the town at this time. We'll develop a policy, and then if council wants to undertake a specific initiative pursuant to that policy, then they would, council would debate that, and they would have to find funding for that. But to this point in the development of policy, there would be no cost to the town, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Legore. Counselor Montgomery, does that satisfy your concerns or your queries?
So we're going to create a policy that will have, basically, won't actually do anything, is what I'm hearing?
Your worship, as I explained, just by simply belonging to this coalition, in having the membership, it gives us all kinds of advantages that don't cost anything.
Again, does that help Counselor Montgomery?
I guess I'll have to, I'll have to consider what Counselor Peterson has said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. So at this point, we have a motion on the floor. Counselor Bauer?
Thank you, worship. Just before we move on, I just have a quick question for Counselor Peterson. I really like the look of this, this whole coalition and becoming a member of inclusive municipalities. My question is that will this also enable us to embrace not only members of our community that are part of a minority group, but also members who, of our community who may be part of the LGBTQ group? And the reason I'm asking that, because I personally have always wanted to see a rainbow crosswalk or a rainbow flag, or for us to be able to celebrate Transgender Awareness Week or Pride Week or any of these. And does this give us a legitimate policy whereby we can do those types of things?
Your worship? So it is an anti-discrimination as well as a pro-inclusion document. So it definitely, that is one of the definitive underlying components of it. So anti-discrimination in all of its processes. One of the offers that has already been made is the professional that has been hired by Chestamere has agreed to come before our council at any time we should wish and speak to us about the initiatives that they're undertaking. And so she's been very involved in everything from, you know, looking for people to bring advisory components to their council on the LGBTQ spectrum, to working with Black Lives Matter, looking for Indigenous representative. Counselor Bauer, you've talked in the past about having advisory boards, and she, you know, that's one of the things that could lead from this. So it would be advisory boards on all of those kinds of options that you talked about, having a youth advisory that would have an LGBTQs component. And we could also have a, an inclusion, you know, it could be an inclusion body where we have an advisory group. It's really interesting to look at what's happened across this country and even across the world, and how it's brought those communities together and how they share resources at no cost and at tremendous gain. And so Ms. Joanne Kenya Baker is the name of the staff at Chestamere, who's been extremely helpful to me in guiding this, and she would be more than happy to come and speak to our council.
I would like that, and I would also like administration to be able to follow up with her as well, if possible.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor, and I'll call the question. All in favor? And opposed? None? And that motion is passed. We move on to 11.2 Notice of Motion, Counselor Bauer, Council Committee Alternates.
So this basically came to me because I was unable to be at the meeting where the council committee appointments were being discussed. And it was stated that if I had any additions or any feedback that I'd like to give, that I would have the opportunity to do so. So what I would like to do is just ask council if I could have these four different committees. And then I would also, just having a look at everything, I would also ask, like to ask Counselor Sobel whether or not he would be willing to perhaps discuss the possibility of me going on the chamber for the remainder of the term, or if that's something that's dear to his heart that he'd like to continue.
Counselor Sobel? Are you content with being on the chamber?
I hadn't really thought about this, your worship, but given where we are with the, with the chamber and the fact that we're probably got another six meetings left, I don't think it'd be fair to them to change, so I, I think I'd prefer to stick with them to the end of the term.
And I can certainly understand that. When this was done back in September, October, I really didn't think it would take this long, but with COVID and everything else, it has, and it definitely does not hurt my feelings in any way. So the reason that this motion is coming in front of everyone is I had taken a look at other municipalities and noticed that a lot of them had alternates that were designated. There are some times where some of us are not able to make a meeting, and it would be nice to be able to just call up the other person and have them go in our place. How does everyone feel about that?
Counselor Corbial?
Thank you, worship. I don't know if it's necessary, like there are some committees, like Wadamsa, where it's Terry and I. So we already have two people, and so if one person can't attend, we still have a representative, I guess. On some of them, where we don't, maybe it is a good idea. I know some of them we kind of do right now, but maybe it's not like recorded. I'm, I'm fine with this.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Peterson?
Your worship, there are some times when having, having an alternate is a pretty critical thing, and that came to my attention when Counselor Cox had to, had to take a brief leave. Our council appointed Counselor Montgomery as her alternate to sit on Wheatland Housing. And one of the things that wasn't considered at the time is that because of the structure of Wheatland Housing, it's structured by ministerial order, that, that we sort of usurped a process, and, and it was fine, it worked out just fine. But having, having an appointed alternate at the time that the appointments were made would have been better. And, you know, we've been able to move by that in the past because you sit ex officio of everything, so you've been able to go in my place, and that's worked out really well. But for future considerations in those committees that require ministerial approval, like Wheatland Housing, I don't know if there are any others, but then I think Counselor Bauer's point is really legitimate, that, that, that alternate, alternate needs to be named and then name put forward. And that might be the same with Wadamsa, because there is consideration for why there has to be two votes at that. It is a distribution or a distributive vote, and that also applies to Wheatland Housing, and that could be changing in the near, in the future, Terry, I don't know how you feel, but, you know, as, as that population shift happens and contribution shift happens, that also, that need also might happen. So it's definitely something that would be worthwhile taking a look at from a, from a legalistic standpoint as well. Thanks, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just have a question before I go on to Counselor Sobel. Counselor Bauer, just for clarification, are you, if we pass this, are you hoping to have specific members stated for each of the committees now as alternates, then as of tonight?
Your worship, thank you for asking that question, because initially, when I had posed this, it was at the end, or it was in the fall. And I have to be realistic that this time right now may not be the best time for us to make changes to our own committees, but perhaps what we could do is if this is passed, we could ask the next council if they could entertain the discussions to have alternate, and then by that time, administration would be able to take a look at each committee, see which one does have ministerial approval, which ones don't, which ones are important for us to always have two votes at, and then maybe go in that direction then, so that this could be brought forward to administration to look into now, and we would vote on that rather than making the changes to our current committees. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you. And I think Jennifer's going to jump in too. She's got an idea.
Thank you, worship. Just wanted to mention that we can automate, sorry, administration can automatically include alternates at the next organizational meeting of council, which would be the new council, to include alternates for all of the committees. And perhaps the motion that council would want to move tonight could be just direct to administration to do, just to do just that.
So does anyone need help wordsmithing a motion that would tie into what Jennifer mentioned? Counselor Sobel, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. So obviously, we're not dealing with committees of council because none of us have to vote on those, at those committees, so we're dealing with external committees, I'm assuming. And, and, and I'm glad, and I really appreciate the fact that we've sort of, it sort of looks like we're going to do this as a, as a, a project for the next organizational meeting, which is one of the points I was going to suggest. But also, you know, even if we were talking about the chamber, the, it's, it's not us who, I mean, although we recommend which councillor goes on there, it's actually, their bylaws actually appoint the councillor to their board. So a second would not help you and the chamber, because you have to be a director to sit, sit at the board and be involved in, 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 you have to be a director, actually, and only when director is appointed per organization. So, but I think all of this can be looked at in the fall, and I'd be happy to, to support directing administration to consider alternates at the next organizational meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. So we, I guess we need to know how to word that motion then to direct administration.
Your worship, I could read that council direct administration to consider alternates for committees on which councillors sit at the next operational meeting, or, sorry, at the next organizational meeting.
Oh, Counselor Bauer, sorry.
I'm ready to make that motion, your worship.
Thank you.
I move it to direct administration to, to consider alternates for committees at the next, on which councillors sit at the next organizational meeting.
Thank you very much for that motion. You've all heard the motion? All, all in favor? And that motion is carried. That brings us to 11.3 Notice of Motion, Counselor Montgomery, Regarding Budget Clarity. Counselor Montgomery?
Your worship?
Jennifer?
Your worship, there's two notices of motion in the agenda from Counselor Montgomery. Administration would like to know at which meeting Counselor Montgomery would like those notices of motion considered.
Counselor Montgomery, do you know what date you'd like to have those motions come forward?
Yeah, I guess I would like to hear from administration, I guess, when or why not tonight?
Your worship, typically notices of motion are just that, they're notices to the rest of council that a council member is bringing forward a matter or a motion at a subsequent meeting. That would be the proper procedure for bringing it forward, and if, sorry, administration would recommend that the motions could be made at the next council meeting.
So these notices of motion, the motions could come forward then at the February 3rd meeting? Were you, were you, did that clear up the question for you, Counselor Montgomery?
Well, I guess I would like to hear from my fellow councillors if there's any reason why they're not prepared for these motions tonight.
Well, I guess the procedural point is that a notice of motion is that, it's a notice, but a motion- notice that a motion is going to be coming.
Right, but I believe last year, we changed that so that just simply putting it in the agenda was going to serve as notice.
Okay, well, let me just check with Mr. Legore. He has his hand up.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Last year, we did handle some of these where notice of motion was brought at the meeting and dealt with at the same meeting. That's the improper procedures you should follow where the notice of motion is given and then dealt at a subsequent meeting with a date that's a choosing of whoever's presenting that notice of motion. And I did point that out to council in an email that I sent out when I responded to Counselor Montgomery on these two particular motions, that you serve notice now for the date that you want them dealt with at a later time. And typically, that would be the 3rd of November. And if you look at Section 111A of the Procedures Bylaw, it speaks to it.
Can't hear you?
Your Worship, we're having difficulty hearing, or at least I am having difficulty hearing our CIO.
Okay, we'll try that again then. Mr. Legore, if you could?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Section 111A of the Procedures Bylaw speaks to it, but notice of motions are presented at one meeting for a subsequent meeting to be heard. And when you present them, you can give a date as to when you want it heard. That gives all of council the opportunity to do their investigation, research on it if they want, and it also gives the opportunity to administration to be a bit prepared when they need to speak to that particular motion. So last year, we were not following the procedure correctly, and we're trying to get off on the right foot in 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Legore, Counselor Montgomery, and then Counselor Cox.
Sure, I will, sure. So my first one has to do with budget clarity, and the background is that surplus revenues from various parts of the town operations often go into a general pot of funding that is then used to cover the cost of other parts of the town's operations where there is a deficit. allocations of surpluses that are planned to cover deficits should be detailed at budget time to bring clarity to how funds are being spent. Unallocated surpluses should be limited or identified at budget time. And so the motion that I would be bringing forward is that council direct administration to create a policy where planned surpluses are clearly identified and allocated at the time of budget planning, and unallocated surpluses are also clearly identified. And I guess if anyone has any questions about those, please let me know. And I would like that brought forward at the next meeting, so I believe that'll be February 3rd.
Do you want to also deal with your notice of motion concerning capital project modification and approvals at this same time?
Yeah. So this, yeah, this has to do with capital project modifications. So the background is that there has been several incidences, or instances, where capital project details change substantially after funding has been approved without subsequent reapproval by council. As council is responsible for how capital funds are allocated and spent, it is important that capital projects are implemented as approved, and if there are any changes proposed, that the new project be reapproved prior to moving forward. It is also important that final and ongoing costs of capital projects be reported by the CIO quarterly to council. My resolution will be to direct administration to create a policy before March 2021 that would limit capital funds to be used only for the specific projects that they have been approved for, and if any material changes are necessary or proposed, the project must be reapproved prior to moving forward. And further, the CIO will report ongoing and final costs for all budgeted capital project expenditures quarterly at the committee of the whole meeting. And if anyone has any questions about that, I can answer that as well.
And do you want?
And again, I would like that to be for the next meeting, please.
Okay, thank you. And if I could just ask Mr. Legore, that timeline of March 2021, is that a doable one? Or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we'll be prepared to address him at that time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Cox, I believe you had your hand up as well. Counselor Montgomery, did you want to finish off with anything?
I believe that's it, unless anyone has any questions about either of those.
Okay, I have Counselor Cox first, and then anyone else can come in after that.
It's okay, Your Worship. I just, I'm confused, because Counselor Bauer's notice of motion was in the agenda, and so was Counselor, our Deputy Mayor Peterson's. But I believe they were also in the last agenda package, so it's making sense to me. So I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from councillors? Seeing none, then we go on to bylaws. Number 12 bylaw, 12.1, bylaw number 21-02, fees bylaw amendment bylaw dealing with bulk water, and I believe Mr. TD is speaking on this. Welcome, Mel.
Thank you, Your Worship. Schedule S was originally implemented in the fees bylaw of last year with the sunset clause for one year only. This is being brought back for reapproval by council. Details on the specific application are included in the report, and I could answer any questions if council has any.
Thank you, Mr. TD. Any questions for Mr. TD from councillors? I don't see any, so then I'm looking for the start of our motions. Counselor Corbiel?
Thank you, Worship. I move the council give first reading to bylaw number 21-02, fee bylaw amendment bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor Corbiel. You've all heard the motion. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Counselor Bauer?
Thank you, Worship. I move that council give second reading to bylaw number 21-02, fees bylaw amendment bylaw.
Thank you for that motion. You've all heard the motion. And now that we have a motion on for second reading, is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that motion is carried.
Your Worship, I'd move that council give unanimous consent to a third and final reading of bylaw number 21-01 supplementary assessment bylaw.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure we got that number. It's 21-02. Thank you. You've all heard the motion. All in favor? Thank you very much, council. And Deputy Mayor Peterson?
I would move that council give third and final reading to bylaw number 21-02, fees bylaw amendment bylaw.
Thank you for your motion. You've all heard the motion. All in favor? Counselor Corbiel? And that motion is carried. Thank you. That brings us to 12.2 on the hit parade. 21 bylaw, 21-01 supplementary assessment bylaw, which is on page 66. And again, Mr. TD is speaking to that.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is a housekeeping bylaw that is passed annually. It provides for the assessment of building improvements that are completed during the calendar year subsequent to the original assessment that is mailed out at the beginning of each year. It forms part of the budget annually, and the taxes collected in the last two years have been in the area of $16,000 and $33,000. Those are my comments, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. TD? Seeing none, and we're looking to get the motions begun. Counselor Sobel?
Your Worship, I'd move that council give first reading to bylaw number 21-01 supplementary assessment bylaw.
Thank you for your motion. You've all heard the motion. All in favor? And the motion is carried. Counselor Corbiel?
I move that council give second reading to bylaw number 21-01 supplementary assessment bylaw.
Thank you very much. Now that we have that motion for second reading on the floor, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That motion is carried. Deputy Mayor Peterson?
I move that council give unanimous consent to third and final reading of bylaw number 21-01 supplementary assessment bylaw.
Thank you for your motion. You've all heard the motion. All in favor? And the motion is carried. Counselor Bauer?
I move that council give third and final reading to bylaw number 21-01 supplementary assessment bylaw, Your Worship.
Thank you for that, Counselor Bauer. You've all heard the motion. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. TD. That brings us to 12.3, bylaw number 21-05 election bylaw amendment bylaw, and Jennifer is speaking to that.
Thank you, Worship. We are in the fourth year of council's term, and as such, we, administration is getting prepared to hold our municipal election. There have been some changes in the Local Authorities' Election Act in regard to elections, and we're bringing forward a few changes that we need to make to our elections bylaw in order to align with the Local Authorities' Election Act, and also to align with some organizational changes that have taken place. So one of the changes that was made in the Local Authorities' Election Act was the nomination period. So that's the period when any candidate within the community can submit nomination papers to run for a seat on our council. And actually, that time period has changed to start January 1st of this year, so we're already in that time period. And it ends on Monday, September 20th, which is still considered nomination day. The difference is, before, we only had one day where candidates could submit their nomination papers, but now we have pretty much an entire, an entire year. So there's a few changes that need to be made to our bylaw right now. I also want to say that we'll be bringing forward some more considerations for council in the near future in regards to some of our voting procedures and things like that, such as, one thing this year that's going to be really important for council to consider is allowing for a mail-in ballot just because of the COVID situation that we're in. But the changes that we want council to pass tonight in the bylaw include, number one, appointing the returning officer for the town of Strathmore. This is a, this change reflects an organizational change. Previously, it was the manager of Legislative Services, and we no longer have a manager of Legislative Services, so we're recommending that the Director of Strategic Administrative Services be appointed as returning officer. Also, within the act, council is required to appoint a substitute returning officer should the returning officer be unable to perform their duties. And we're recommending that council appoint the senior legislative assistant as the substitute returning officer, sorry. And then lastly, the last recommendation, sorry, the last change we're recommending tonight is in regard to the receipt of nominations. And we're required to put the address in our bylaw where we can receive nominations, and we've just updated our address to include the new town office. And we are recommending that council give all three readings to the bylaw this evening.
Thank you very much for that report. Does council have any questions for Jennifer? Seeing none, then we're looking to begin the motions.
Sorry, Your Worship. I do have a question.
Counselor Bauer?
My question is to Jennifer, if she's able to answer this. I did notice a few other municipalities are already advertising that nominations are open, so I kind of knew this was coming before I saw it on the agenda for today. However, many of those municipalities do not, especially small municipalities like ours, do not have a amount for the candidates to include with their nomination form as high as $250, and some of them have zero, that they only have to get the signatures. So I am mindful that as a candidate, you are putting out, you know, the $250, but if you do receive a number of votes, that you are going to get that back. But has this council ever discussed that amount, or were there previous administrations that looked at that amount? And would you please explain to me why it was settled on at $250, and whether or not that should be up for discussion?
Thank you, Your Worship. Very good question, Counselor Bauer. So yes, we have considered the deposit amount in the past. I believe last year, or not last year, last election, we did increase that deposit amount to $250. I believe before that, it was $100, but that's just my guess with my memory. According to the act, municipalities can charge a fee up to $1,000, I believe, for communities of $10,000 or more. I can't comment on the reason why we have increased the fee. I can comment, I think the reason that we do have a fee, or some municipalities have a fee, is to ensure that those submitting nomination forms honestly are serious about running for council. And sometimes you get into a position, I would say, where someone runs if someone else runs, and then they pull, and then they pull out of the, kind of, the race. So I think that the reason those fees exist is to ensure that those submitting nomination forms are actually serious about running for a spot on council.
Thank you very much for your answer. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Jennifer? Then I'm looking for our first motion. Deputy Mayor Peterson?
Your Worship, I would move that council give first reading to bylaw number 21-05 elections bylaw amendment bylaw.
Thank you. We have a motion for first reading. All in favor? That motion is carried. Counselor Sobel?
Your Worship, I move that council give second reading to bylaw number 21-05 elections bylaw amendment bylaw.
Thank you for that. And now that we have a motion for second reading, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion is carried. Counselor Bauer?
Thank you, Worship. I move that council give unanimous consent to a third and final reading of bylaw number 21-05 elections bylaw amendment bylaw.
Thank you very much. You've all heard the motion. All in favor? Counselor Corbiel?
I move that council give third and final reading to bylaw number 21-05 elections bylaw amendment bylaw.
Oh, all in favor? Sorry. And that motion is carried. Thank you. Item 13, I don't believe we have any urgent business, which brings us to 14.
Your Worship, I think we need to appoint a returning officer.
It'll be within the bylaw?
Your Worship, the returning, appointment of returning officer was included within the bylaw.
Ah, thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you for that, Jennifer. Questions between councillors and council statements? I have Counselor Montgomery and Counselor Corbiel. Were you wanting to speak to the MLA potential meeting with the MLA after Counselor Montgomery? Okay, Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you, Worship. So I wanted to talk about the Handy Bus today. So first of all, I can, I guess, share with the community now, now that, you know, things are kind of far enough along that I'm not going to be kind of causing any problems. I can share that the Handy Bus Association is in the final stages of setting up kind of an independent operation. The association has just hired a manager to manage the service, and they are also in the kind of final stages of setting up other parts of the operation as well to operate independently from the town. The association is grateful for the help from the town that is received thus far. It's, you know, the town somewhat, you know, saved the association a number of years ago when things were a bit tougher. And so, yeah, so it's, it's, things are, things are kind of coming together, and there should be some good things coming out of there soon. should be some good things coming out of there soon. The, the Handy Bus Association has just finished a website, so that's handybus.ca. So, anybody who is interested in becoming a client of the Handy Bus Service, you can go on to handybus.ca, and you can fill out an online intake form. And there's also other information on there about, about the, you know, you can donate and whatnot. And then, the other thing I wanted to bring up as well is, it's been brought to my attention that there's, there's kind of issues with the flow of information between residents in the community and the Handy Bus Association, and, and myself as well. I understand that a, a number of people apparently have approached Counselor Peterson, you know, over the last couple of years, it sounds like, based on what Counselor Peterson has said, and, and Counselor Peterson has mentioned that there's, there's concerns. So, she's never identified those concerns. And, and I've asked repeatedly for, for either her or the people who have approached her to, to please approach me directly, so that I can speak to those, those questions or concerns myself, because, as I said, those concerns are not being passed along to myself or the association, and it's important that we do get to hear these issues so that they can be dealt with. And, you know, I've spent a lot of time with Counselor Peterson discussing the Handy Bus over the last couple of years, and, you know, I've, I've given her all the information that I can to kind of, you know, fill her in on what's going on with the Handy Bus. And, and it just sounds like that, that some of the, some residents in the community that are approaching Counselor Peterson are not getting perhaps these concerns addressed. And, and I just want to make sure that, that people are getting their, their concerns addressed. And so you can reach me directly at jason.montgomery@strathmore.ca. You can contact the association directly at handybus.ca. You can, there's a Facebook page for the association that somebody can contact directly. The association is very interested in, in, you know, figuring out if there's any concerns or what those concerns are. Counselor Peterson did, she did kind of submit a, a number of questions at the end of last year to administration, and I answered those questions on the same day. And, and many of those questions, I, I, like I had already discussed with Counselor Peterson over the last couple of years. But I just want to reiterate that if anyone does have any questions or concerns about the association or about the service, to please contact me directly so that I can address those. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Thank you very much, your worship. I, I appreciate the concerns really coming forward, and I'm really grateful that the issue of the Handy Bus is coming to, forward, and that we have a report tonight. In, in regards to Counselor Montgomery's concerns, my way of dealing with this has been really in consideration of bringing the Handy Bus issues into the public purview. So, I think in, since the election of this council, we've had 34 meetings, or 34 months of meetings, rather, and normally, an appointment to a committee would ensure that, that the council appointed to the committee would report monthly. It's not a required practice, but it is a, an accepted practice. And so I think with the Handy Bus, we've had two or three reports in those 34 months that were in the public purview. So, you know, I know that Mr., that Counselor Montgomery has said that I haven't let him know, but what I have done is anytime that there's been a concern from the public, I have put it through an email to all of council and administration, and I've done two administration inquiries, which, to both administration and, and Counselor Montgomery, and he has answered those questions. But sometimes the questions haven't been answered to the satisfaction of the community. So, in that case, I think that they have come back, or that they will come back. And so, in, in sending the emails that I did send, there is a record that those emails were sent prior, or that the administration inquiries were sent prior to the meetings, and, and because I didn't care when they came back, that there was ample time for them also to be addressed by the Handy, Handy Bus Board, and I, and that's where I would hope that it would be. So, in terms of, of people not, not addressing, I think that I had a call from Christie Shorak, who's the housing manager at Wheatland Housing, and I think Wheatland Housing has around 30 members that, that are, that use the Handy Bus. And that when she made that inquiry to me, I asked her to please contact Counselor Montgomery, and, and I also asked her to keep council and administration in the loop, and she did that, and she made an invitation to Counselor Montgomery, and she invited him to a meeting, and I believe he attended a meeting of the Wheatland Housing Authority, or Wheatland Lodge, rather, on August 18th last summer, and he did speak to the residents. Since then, I've had another request for information from, from the lodge, and I've asked their housing manager to do what our CAO has asked us to do, which is to present the expectations through the, through the administration. So, I'm sure that this council will soon see all the concerns that have come forward from those 28 to 30 people of users at the, at Wheatland Lodge. I'm sure that they will come through to administration and to council. I've had, I've had 11 other concerns, and I have also asked those people to please contact administration as well, on, so that, that they can bring those forward. Two of those individuals have said that they plan on doing that, that they plan on addressing expectations to, to the administration for when it comes back to council again, and they also know, as they always have known, that if they want to address the Handy Bus Board, that that is definitely their, their right, and, and that the Handy Bus Board is open to that. When I've asked seniors to, to contact the Handy Bus Board, they have evinced concerns around, around issues of confidentiality, and there's, I'll let them speak to that. I think that that will come up as one of the concerns that they have going forward. And I'm confident that all of their concerns have been brought before council, that they've brought into the public purview, and, and that they have been addressed by Counselor Montgomery. My concern is that when the town does their next memorandum of understanding for the Handy Bus, that all of those expectations of the community will be highlighted and will be addressed when we do that memorandum of understanding, and one of those things will be regular reporting by whoever sits as a member for that committee in the next council, so that the public is acutely aware of where their taxpayer dollars are going and to what end. Thank you, your worship.
Mr. Legore, did you want to weigh in?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. We did receive a letter today from the resident manager at Wheatland Housing Lodge. I did talk to Christie, and I have forwarded the letter on to the president of the Handy Bus Association, Alice Booth, and she will be responding to them.
I have a question just for you, Mr. Legore. Since, since the Handy Bus is going its own way, what will, what will be our administration's role as far as, as far as the Handy Bus? We'll have a much lesser role than we would normally have.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We basically will have no role in the administration of the Handy Bus. They will continue to use the barn, as we call it, the hand, the bus barn, and that is, that is basically our total commitment to them.
So, I guess my question is, if, if people have concerns or comments, they would no longer come to administration? They would deal directly with this newly branded, newly departed Handy Bus Association? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct, and if we do receive any inquiries, we will refer them directly to Alice Booth, the president of the Handy Bus Association.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Montgomery, and, and then, did you want to say anything, Counselor Montgomery, in response?
Yeah, yeah, if I could. So, I, this, this kind of, like, this concern arose to me because it's, it's been communicated that people have asked Counselor Peterson questions, and Counselor Peterson has stated that she doesn't have the answers to those questions, and she's, she's unable to get those answers. And, and as I said, I've, I've actually, I've sat down with Counselor Peterson and had hours-long discussions about the Handy Bus, about, you know, how it operates, about every facet of the operation, its, the concerns with the, the Handy Bus, you know, ideas. I, I sought her help last year, or no, it was actually in 2019, you know, and I sat down with her for a few hours, and, and we discussed, you know, kind of the, the plan going forward for the Handy Bus, and, and, and so it's, as I said, it's just, it's concerning to me that it seems like the information is, is just kind of not getting out there, because there's, there's no, there's no shortage of, of trying on my part to get the information out there. And, and as for like the, the filing monthly reports, it's true, I, I could file monthly reports that would basically just be limited to, you know, the Handy Bus did 400 trips this month, you know, and they have, you know, X amount in their bank account. That's, that's kind of not, it's not really helpful to this council exactly to, you know, those numbers could, you know, mean a lot or mean nothing, basically, to the average counselor. I've always been more than happy, and I've, I've spoken in camera many times about the Handy Bus, because there's been many things about the Handy Bus, especially as it transitions to a private, or like an independent organization. There's many aspects that I have not been able to discuss, which is why I have not, you know, basically talked about it in public, you know, as much as other, other committees or, or boards have been spoken about, because there's, there's legal, there's legal issues and liability issues with speaking about some of, some of what goes on with the Handy Bus as it transitions. But, but as I said, I've, I've always been very clear and upfront about, about the situation with the Handy Bus, and I've always been willing to answer any questions, and that's, that's why that this, this kind of is concerning to me. And, and so I guess, yeah, and, and as I said, you know, if, if anyone has any, any questions, I am, I am the, I am the people's representative, you know, and so if there's concerns about, you know, and I totally understand if there's concerns, I've, I've heard those concerns. If somebody is concerned about approaching the Handy Bus directly because they're, they're afraid of, you know, punitive response of some sort, I am your representative. I fight for you. I fight for you, the, the value of the money that you guys contribute to this organization, and I also, I fight to make sure that everybody is treated fairly and, and given the best treatment possible. So, if anyone has, again, if anyone has any questions, concerns, comments about the Handy Bus, I'm more than happy to address those, and, and I, I really hope to hear from some people. Thank you.
So, I guess now that we've created this new...
Your worship, I just have a point of clarification. So, I didn't say that I didn't hear from Counselor Montgomery. I did say that patrons of the Handy Bus were not satisfied with the answers that they had received, and so I left it in their purview.
I, 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 sorry, I don't mean tonight. This was something that you said a while ago.
CAO just explained, he has gotten some more questions back, and he has referred those on, and I believe that the same thing will be continuing, and that the questions that I get are relevant to affordability and sustainability. They've never been any different, and the questions continue. And even though the answers have been given by Counselor Montgomery, in the questions that I received just two days ago from people at, at Wheatland Lodge, was that, and this may or may not be true, because I wasn't at Counselor Montgomery's August 18th presentation, they believe that he said that the cost for the Handy Bus would be possibly decreased. They then experienced the COVID reality, which created huge stresses for many, many people, including the people at the lodge, and so there was confusion. So, they continued to bring those back. Counselor Montgomery did answer questions on the administrative inquiry, give him full credit for that, but I am not responsible for the questions that the public have, and that's why I have consistently asked them to bring them to the board, to their representatives, and, and, and to keep them in the public purview. And I believe that up until this point, issues around the Handy Buses have not been clear. I believe that they have not been in the public purview. Otherwise, people would not continue to keep asking the questions. So, one of the ways to deal with that is to make sure we have consistent reporting. CAO Legore, in an email to council, said that he wished questions to come forward that, from council or whoever, on expectations for the memorandum of understanding that the town will sign into the future. That is my only concern now as a representative. I am very, very concerned for the future of the Handy Bus. I have huge concerns that, that I will bring up when the time, when the time is appropriate, and I'll make sure that the Handy Bus Board has every opportunity to address them. And my concerns might be unfounded, because there's just so many unknowns. But my big concern is that the town be able to continue supporting the Handy Bus and weave that, that safety net underneath it, so that residents in this community will continue to have the service going forward for many years to come. And just like the rest of this council, I, I saw the report from the secretary treasurer, the treasurer of the Handy Bus, and in that report, on, I think, December 2nd, or whenever that meeting was, it says in there that they are worried about the sustainability going forward for the Handy Bus, and that's a huge concern for me, and huge concern to the vulnerable population in this community, your worship.
Well, we've entered in a, I believe we've entered in a new era of, of Handy Bus, of the Handy Bus Association. So, with the town being at more of an arm's length distance from it, the responsibility to communicate and receive information and, and get out information will fall more and more on the Handy Bus Association. So, if we can try to direct people to communicate regularly with the Handy Bus Association, it hopefully will go very well, and I'm sure Counselor Montgomery, you and your board are going to be working to make sure that the system and the services can be sustainable into the future. So, I guess if other, if communication comes to any of us on council, we direct it to the Handy Bus Association, to the website, to the Facebook page, because we are not, as a, as a town council, as a municipal organization, nearly as involved in it as we, as we were, because the association is, you know, I don't want to say, the word breaking, the words breaking away sounds a little more dramatic than, than what it might normally, might actually be. So, I think if we can, if we can get those people who have concerns or questions or compliments to deal directly with the board, that would be a good move for all of us moving forward. And then we'll have the MOU coming to us at a, a time in the not-too-distant future. I'm, I'm not quite remembering when exactly the MOU might be coming to us.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We don't have a date set for that yet, but we will be bringing an amended MOU forward to council to deal with the separation.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Corbiel, did you have your hand up way back on this, or am I seeing things?
No, I did, actually. I was just gonna, uh, appoint a clarification. The town, the residents can still submit what their expectations are, um, as funded. They just...
Counselor Corbiel, if you heard me giggle a little, you, your responses got slower and slower, and then there was a freezing, so we're kind of, we're kind of not sure what's, either you're drinking heavily, or there's a computer problem.
Or both? No.
Right now, you're...
Um, no, my question was, like, if, if people, if...
Uh, we're still losing you, unfortunately.
Counselor Corbiel, if you shut off the video, sometimes that improves the audio.
Well, I'll try it. I just had a quick question with regards to the residents' expectations. They can still submit those to the town up until that MOU is done. Am I correct?
Sorry, if I could answer this. Yeah, so, like, I, I strongly, I mean, I, I strongly urge anybody in the community who has any, you know, feelings about the Handy Bus at all to contact any, any member on council, but, you know, it, it would be helpful to contact me. The town is putting together a new agreement with the Handy Bus, and in, within that, I'm hoping that we can spell out some expectations. The previous MOU had no expectations at all. It was basically just giving money to the Handy Bus, you know, with, with, you know, basically a blank check. And, and there are, I, I would like to see some expectations to go along with the funding that this community provides, and, because it's important to me that we are getting our, our money's worth, you know, and that everybody feels like it's, basically, we should feel like what we're paying for is, is basically doing what we want. So, yeah, I, I strongly urge anybody that has any ideas to contact administration or to contact a member of council and share those, so that those... to contact a member of council, and share those, so that those can be included or at least considered as part of the MOU. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, has everyone commented who wants to comment? Yeah, I think so, that's good. And at this point, we have item 15, administrative inquiries coming at us from Debra Hammer.
Thank you, your worship. I have two administrative inquiries from Mayor Fuel. The first one is about a playground. I'm wondering if a playground equipment could be considered in a green space at the south end of Hillville Crescent. The only close playground to all the surrounding Hillview houses is across the 817 to the Aggrounds, Agground Playground. Even with a crossing light crossing a highway to get to a playground is not safe. And the second administrative inquiry I have is concerning the paved pathway through the park at Strathmore Lakes Crescent. I just wanted to ensure that a paved pathway through the park at Strathmore Lakes Crescent could be added to our list. It would be across from the path that we did two years ago, through a green space connected to the Strathmore Lake Circuit. This new pathway I'm suggesting would then connect to that two-year-old path and to an existing short walkway that links to Strathmore Lakes Way.
Do you have more, Debra? Just those two for me, okay, thank you. And that brings us to, I'm looking for a motion to go in camera to deal with two items. And I think you'll need, do you need to, you don't need to have, you've already written down the numbers that they deal with as far as the FOIP condition, so, looking for a motion to go in camera. Counselor Sobel? You've all heard the motion, all in favor? And we are going...